Everyone please join me to pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have the approval of the members of September the 20th, 2011 regular meeting?
Aye.
All those in favor of the approval of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Public comments. The FFA conservative, John Smith, Dr. Lawrence Smith, Jonathan Tackett, Eric Thomas.
Thank you for this opportunity to listen to us. And I'm not to blame for all these folks being here. This was not a coup by any means. Dr. Smith and I have been talking about the state of the economy in Lincoln County and the importance of economic development and a positive attitude. When people have a positive attitude, the county, the community will flourish. We had a, an FFA program and have in this county that is second to none statewide. I worked two and a half years in Elkins when this high school was first built out here. And I had people coming to me and asking about the FFA program, what was going on down there. And fortunately, we had a, an FFA teacher that was above average. And he did a great job. We got state recognition for that. We're at a point now where things are critical when we must go on. And we're asking the board to consider very seriously a, a BOAG teacher and maybe even a second one because we believe that there is a possibility that that may be a program that, that needs to be expanded upon. In Lincoln County, and I, forgive me, I'm John Smith for some of you all don't know. I'm, I work for the United States Department of Agriculture. And I just want to give you some unimportant and significant numbers here. But for example, in, in Lincoln County, there's almost 7,000 acres worth of crop debt, 7,000 acres of cropland and about, about that much pasture land. So there's quite a few sheep and cattle grown. No, we're not the biggest agriculture, we're not Greenbrier County, we're not Popehonest County, but we, we hold our own in, in agriculture. Over the years, the FFA program, when Ryan Sacks was first hired, we, we've had equipment sales, farm equipment sales out there at the high school. Farmers would come in and consign their equipment and, and the BOAG program, the FFA program would get part of that money, consignment fee for that. We sold $80,000 of, worth of equipment there in some, on some of those occasions. We did it on spring and fall. There weren't no other FFA or BOAG programs that I know of with the exception of Ravenswood in this, the western part of the state that did that. We began to doing it, began doing it here in Lincoln County. Now it seems like everybody wants to do it. I understand Cabal Midland started doing it in some of the other surrounding schools. We were leaders in that. We were involved in the ham bacon and egg sale at the Radisson in Huntington. Our kids brought hams and bacon, the FFA and 4H brought down there. And it, it, it caused a, folks in this county to take a look at it. And we had, we had people go to those sales and bid on those products that these kids had raised and produced. And the first year or two, Cabal County kids killed us. They made more money than our kids. And it really bothered us a lot. And then as it went on, we got to the point where we started kicking Cabal Midland's proverbial. So when, when, when the word got around, our, our businesses got behind them, these kids, and, and helped support that. We have, for example, give you what's going on. We have three FFA students who are going to be competing in the National FFA Convention this year. I thought that was a great honor. They're, they're involved in the Cabal County Fair. They show lambs and pigs and steers and, and everything at the Cabal County Fair. They're also involved in the Pumpkin Festival down in Milton. I think they're going to make some molasses down there. And, and all of this adds to the pride of the community, which, which helps everyone. It has a snowball effect, as you are well aware, Donna. We had, like I said, state recognition. We want that to continue. We don't want to drop the ball here. I brought with me a couple of other folks that want to talk. I don't want to talk all evening, although I could. But some of these folks may also help to further our case. As, we really want to express to you the importance of this program. I think it took off when this, the high school was first built. It took off like no other program out there. I don't, I just don't think any other one compared to how it blossomed. And we want that to continue. And, and we urge the board to, to really look at this program seriously. I think the community is behind it. I know the community is behind it. I'll give you an example. There was a situation where the FFA kids bought their blue jackets, which they're very proud of, and they have their names on them. And the, one of the first or second year, I believe it was, there was kids in that program that couldn't afford those FFA jackets. Just to give you an example, the Bethel Baptist Church bought 42 of them at $50 apiece, just out of the goodness of their heart. That's commu-, they didn't do that because Ryan held a gun to our head. As a matter of fact, they did it at a picnic in about five minutes. It took about five minutes at a picnic. So I, I, I want to express to you how important this program is and how important it is to a lot of people in this community. So with that, I will turn my time over to Jonathan Tackett.
Well, I'm a little bit as long-winded as John is. Most of you all know my mother's Tina Black. She works in the board's office. First, I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak on behalf of the alumni who was created to support this program and each FFA student. I attended your education system. Most people in here were through the system, principals, teachers, everybody involved in me standing in front of you. I graduated from Marshall and I've served in the military. I'm not going to talk to you today about education because there is enough information in this room that would far surpass mine. I'm going to talk to you about the potential and the qualities that this program brings to the county and to these kids. I'm a little emotional because I learned these qualities from my grandfather. I didn't realize till after he was gone, the type of qualities they are. This county is dying. Cut it right to the chase. That's what it's doing. But with young kids like these that are showing their potential, they're educating younger kids such as in Canal County. They put on demonstrations and educated the kids there. I know our former ag teacher Connie Scarborough was working with April Roach from the extension office to start up small programs in our elementary schools and to work and have these young kids reach out to these elementary schools and to teach these young kids the potentials that they're now learning in high school. I graduated from your system with Attention Deficit Disorder and dyslexia. And it's taken me 10 years to realize how to take those disabilities and use those as a wall to push off of, to drive me forward to achieve my goals. 10 years is a long time. You have the potential in four years to teach these young kids exactly what it's taken me 10 years to learn. But I can tell you honestly, one teacher cannot do it. He is an exceptional man, my best friend, but not even he could do all this by himself. A second teacher to branch out to middle schools, even elementary schools, or even assist a high school would be unimaginable of the potential that this program could show the state. We're already competing with programs that are 80 years old, that have had FFA programs for 80 years. And we're already competing with them and beating them on several grounds. We haven't even broke the shell of this program. We haven't even broke out to the community. I truly believe the potential of this program would put a light on Lincoln County that no other county would be able to touch, period. You don't also, you don't involve the skills that you've learned in arithmetic, mathematics. You increase that by qualities such as determination, achieving goals, dedication, respect. Every time they go to a program, they have to dress appropriately for that program. It's a requirement. In the military, you don't go anywhere unless your uniform's straight, in check everywhere. Because when you walk somewhere, you don't represent just yourself. That's what these young kids are doing for you. The concerns of our alumni are not the educational achievements of the teacher you're going to hire, but the qualities they're going to bring to the program that Mr. Sacks has brought, Ms. Scarborough has brought. Because when they're in, when they're in the classroom and teaching their educational lessons, that's great. But this program goes far beyond that, outside the classroom. This teacher has to show qualities that some other teachers may not ever have to show to their students on a personal level or a community level. The education system you all have set up will hire the teacher that is most qualified. But what the alumni hopes is that each person, each staff member required to hire this teacher or any future teacher for ag programs is that you will consider all aspects of this program. You will consider all of the programs at hand. Understand what the program needs educationally, but also personally and professionally. Know that this person has these qualities to pass on to these young kids. Because these young kids are going to go out in the community. And if those are the goals and those are the qualities that they are taught, it will reflect in them without them even knowing it. I encourage, speaking on behalf of the alumni, is you can read all that you want about this program on anything that you see. But to truly understand the program, go talk to these young kids. Go let them explain the programs that they're involved in, what they've done in the past. John didn't mention over this past year, 41 of your students have won awards in this program. With the exception of three national competitors, which I have the privilege of going with to Indianapolis. We want a teacher with energy, with drive and tenacity. We want somebody that's not only going to inspire these kids, but the alumni. Farming isn't a 50,000 acre farm or ranch in the Midwest. It's every single person that raises a tomato point in their backyard to put it on their sandwich at night or during the day. You need to remember that. Farming is not monopolized, excuse me. It's right here at home and that's where it starts. And we need to remember that. Thank you.
I guess it's not necessary to have a J in the first part of your name to present for farms, but it helps. John, Jonathan, I don't often use my first name James, but I'm a J too. Think about it, J Smith, I'm a J Smith. We're pretty generic. And I guess it's next most common to Bill Smith, so that's why I use Lauren. But I think it's a real privilege for me to be able to spend just a few moments with you. In deference to you, I have condensed my thoughts to paper, so it's not going to take long. But tonight, I speak on behalf of agriculture, specifically the Lincoln High Agriculture Department. Now, as a representative of the Health Department, I'm aware that Lincoln County last year had the highest rate of teenage pregnancy in the state of West Virginia. Ironically though, that same year, Lincoln County had the best of all 55 counties in physical environment. Does that say something to us? In the new Lincoln High School, we're very fortunate to have that marvelous facility that you've already heard and seen to teach farming education and promote associated activities such as FFA. That's good. I'm firmly convinced that our future in this county lies based on agriculture. Recently, while attending the West Virginia State Fair with my family, I observed youths when I was there from other counties, busy tending to animals relating to each other and with adults who shared skills with them. Pride was apparent as they prepared for competition. An air of camaraderie existed in a quiet cacophony of animal sounds for these involved youths. It took discipline and investment of time to get to this stage in their life. My own granddaughters were part of this informal life skills training course, finding a constructive manner in which to develop a sense of self-worth as they showed sheep from our own flock. Went to some nearby stalls. You know, you have a series of stalls for your sheep and then others have nearby. And in that nearby stall, there were some youths who had an interesting history. They began their ag interest with four lambs and a steer. Now sometime later, through FFA experience in building, modeling, training, that's a program under FFA, and university training, these three awaited an assurance of profession in ag business. They also had a much larger flock and more animals. They, as others, have learned leadership skills through purposeful activity. Let's consider another county, Randolph County, for example, with that little town of Hillvishia. They rated last year much lower than Lincoln County in physical environment. And yet their ag in image in cheese production is truly significant. Think of our possibilities with our physical environment, one of the best in the state, uniquely situated between two metropolitan areas with our own youth and their potential. It's clear to me that while parents should play a significant part in education and nurturing, the school system can provide important role in sensitizing, challenging, educating youth in skill development. In summation, I believe that our Lincoln County community has the expertise available to partner with the high school. I could tell you examples of that. If we all work together for that purpose and make a very successful program. I also, the reason I'm here with my bent in the Health Department is, with strong agriculture education, I firmly believe it will serve an important tool in helping combat runaway teenage pregnancy. And I want to reiterate that again. It will serve, I feel, as an important tool in helping combat runaway teenage pregnancy. I leave you with this thought. Today, when I was at the office, Pam Barley, a longtime employee, said to me, you know, when I was over at the greenhouse a year or so ago, buying some plants, I noticed how beautiful it was. And I spoke to a young fellow who was there and I said, this is a great facility. And he leaned over to me and said, you know, if it weren't for this program, I wouldn't be in school. Thank you.
Eric Thomas.
I wanted to say that I always try to buy flowers over there and see like the students are really knowledgeable about what they're selling. And I'm impressed by that. I mean, they know what they're doing and they seem to be very happy doing it.
I just, of course, I've known and do know some of the participants there. On occasion, we talk. I know there's been some concern recently that maybe there's not been as much activity as statewide as maybe has been in the past with, I will attribute much to that when Mr. Sacks was there, not to say anything negative about our previous teacher. But I would hope, you know, we're now advertising for this position, as Ms. Lucas would tell you. So much will depend on, you know, what kind of applicants we get. We, and I think, one with what Jonathan was saying there, that we're going to look for the best person we can get and one is, and I think the message we were seeing we're getting from you all is that not only are they certified to do this, but they also have the energy and they're willing to devote the time after school and on the weekend and going to wherever they've got to go around this state and throughout this country for that matter, and be prepared to do that. And, and I'm sure Ms. Lucas, when their team looks at the applicants, they're going to look and ask this kind of question. And I think that's what you were asking us for, is to make sure that they're willing to do the things, not just during the school day, but, you know, the off hours and summertime, all the times that they must be involved in this. So I think we, at least I'm going to speak for everybody, I think I do. That we're, that's the kind of person we want to. We'd like to see all of our people being more involved in whatever they teach, particularly this one, because it does bring pride to you. I know in the past, you know, we've had presentations from FFA and years ago, I know we had 4H at school and all those things that seemed to have kind of gotten by the wayside. But, you know, everything that we can do and to help promote students that Dr. Smith was talking about, to help them to grow as, to the adults we want to see, but also to bring pride to our county. We're certainly for that.
Do you know any qualified applicants? Please encourage them to apply.
And I don't know really, you know, as far as the other, you know, we have one teacher and your proposal that there be a possibility of another. I think we'd have to kind of evaluate that and maybe get with the principal at the school and, you know, and that has some knowledge of that where, when that occurs. And to see, you know, what, what does the present instructor there do? And what would somebody else do? And see if there's a true need there. And if there is, I'm sure we'd look at it and go from there.
Well, I would just like to say that we definitely will be looking for someone that meets those qualifications that you have brought to our attention because we want this program to continue to flourish. And we're so proud. And I'm thankful that you students are here and what you all do, you know, speaks volume, especially, you know, with three national, people competing in the national level and the state winners. So, you know, I want you all to know that we are very much in support of, you know, this program and wanting it to be the best it can be and continue, you know, with what I know that Lincoln County needs and that you all have made us aware, you know, this evening. But be assured that we support you and, and that program. And we will be looking for the best candidates. So, and as Mr. Chrisley said, we do have that advertised right now. And we're hoping for some really good quality applicants. And that will be, I think it's advertised for a couple of weeks. And we'll be looking, you know, at those and be interviewing, you know, as soon as possible.
Do you know of any good applicants sent our way?
John, you said something that I thought was very, very interesting. With the, the amount of acres that we have in Lincoln County and the business that, that this produces. And Mr. Tackett, you were talking about middle schools and elementary schools. Well, we have four middle schools in the county. And I know one of the things that we've been doing as far as that, that we talked about, you know, just with the band, we were talking about the band, you know, trying to get, you know, try to foster people, kids to, to get into a program, to get into the band. So, so we could expand our, you know, to expand our band. Because, you know, we have a triple A school and we have 25 kids in the band whenever they come in. But this, I think, you know, what you hit on as far as, you know, two BOAG teachers. And I know, you know, we don't, I don't want to say too much about that. But the amount of work that has to be done at the high school with everything from the, you know, the consignment cells that you're talking about, everything that has to be done after school, the amount of business that is done in Lincoln County. I think that, I think there's a pretty strong case for, you know, if we want to foster, if that's really what we want to do, if you really want to foster something, you have to start whenever you're young. And you have to start, you know, in middle school. You have to start grade school. And you have to have that interest. So I think that's, I think it's very, very important. And I think what you said, you know, throwing the data in, saying, hey, listen, this is how much land we have. This is, this is the number one business, this is the business in Lincoln County. I thought, I think it's, go ahead.
Mr. President. USDA makes a thousand, a million dollars in payments every single year in this county to farmers who used to be in the tobacco business. What's called the tobacco bribe. That's a million dollars. For every dollar that's spent in agriculture, it turns over seven times. Agriculture, mining, oil and gas, solar power and fishing industry are the only industries that create wealth. All other industries are trading dollars. And that's why it's so important. And this is an agrarian county that we live in. I don't care what anybody says. There's a lot of farmers in this county. When I first came to work for USDA, we had a thousand quotas in West Virginia. It was the largest tobacco growing county in the state. Nobody raises tobacco anymore, but that's okay. But there's plenty of other, for example, some of you all may not know, but the Greenbrier Hotel, if you go there in the spring of the year and order a meal at the Greenbrier Hotel, and if it comes with asparagus, it was grown in Lincoln County, West Virginia. A lot of people don't know that. And that's a sense of pride for a lot of people. The band is a sense of pride. The football team is a sense of pride. I want you to stand up. Stand up. I want you girls to turn around. And look at the back of their jackets. That brings pride to me.
But I want to tell you something I think we should, I think it's something we should consider. And, and we will definitely, Ms. Lucas will be giving you a call to let you know what, what we do. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay? Mr. Sacks?
Once the, the posting went up so that everybody is aware, since I had some experience with ag, I contacted Mr. Griffith, the assistant principal at the high school. And he has posted the ad nationally on the National FFA website. So it is going out nationally. And it's also been posted statewide through, the state has a statewide email system that emails all ag teachers in the state of West Virginia, as well as prospective ag teachers of the posting. And so that has gone out, actually in the state, it's gone out three times. And it's been posted nationally as well. So I think that the Board of Education is, is truly doing everything they can to make sure that qualified applicants are made aware of the position. And, and I know that that posting that I'd helped Mr. Griffith write indicated some of the things that, that opportunities that that teacher would have at that, at the high school. So I feel like, and it's, I think it's been posted for two weeks. So hopefully that window will create some very qualified applicants, so. will create some very qualified applicants, so.
Chris, normally would Mr. Sacks be involved in the interview?
I think he'd be involved in it.
I think he's on the agenda.
I think so too. We'll, we'll know in a little bit.
Well, I think I will.
May put you right back over there.
But, but, you know, what you say, it's, it just seems like it's, it's a, it's a very, very big job. And even though you have somebody that's absolutely excellent, you know, there's still so much stuff that you have to, so much stuff that you need to do if you want to really foster, if, I mean, if that's what you, you know, that's what it is, if you're really serious about it and you put your money where your mouth is.
Mr. President, one thing I didn't bring up, I think everybody should know that this program doesn't actually stop when they graduate. And I'm going to use myself as an example. I've been around for a long time, my grandfather was one of his tobacco growers when I was growing up. But since I moved back to Lincoln County and to our family's farm, I've started to build that farm up. If it wasn't for Mr. Sacks, Ms. Scarborough and his former teachers...
Oh.
I remember our places.
Go ahead.
If it wasn't his, for his former teacher or students, I actually wouldn't be able to do what I'm doing because, because of the kids that he and Ms. Scarborough has educated, now students, I've asked students to come back to my farm. This previous weekend, a graduating student came back and explained to me what I should do in regards to forestry management, timber management on my farm. And it was actually the son of the asparagus farmer. I also learned in this, with this program, cattle management. You don't have to have 6,000 cows to be a cattlemen. If you just know what you have and to use that to your benefit, that's what this program, I think, can teach the community is that the large-scale farmer doesn't, that's not who creates the money. You can actually have an acre at your house and still be just as productive and save yourself just as much money if you implement a couple of the things that these kids learn. So that's, I mean, that's something to think about is it doesn't end at graduation.
This actually keeps on going.
I do have a word of caution, Mr. President and board members. I understand the vocational agriculture shop was cannibalized by another program and they no longer have that program. Is that right, Mr. Sacks?
Uh, well, we had hired an electrical technology program and they were going to share the, share the facility. And there was some issues, I think, with the, the other instructor and we had written a grant for, to build another facility, metal facility, and we just haven't gotten all the funding that we were required to, to construct that at this time. But we're almost there and, and I, I think that we can continue to work toward that to get the facility that we need for the bio, the biofuels as well as their shop.
So that, you just move it down in location.
Yes, that's the goal.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. If you all want to stick around for the rest of the...
Mr. Griffith?
You don't want to talk at all. My name's Barry Jordan. I work for a gas company in this company, in this county here. I live in Campbell County. I don't have a dog in the hut in Lincoln County. My company, we have done a lot of voluntary work for Lincoln County High School. And please don't write this stuff down. Me and Trish. We cut the location for the barn. We pushed through to get the gas hooked up at Hart's Middle School a year ago. It was hooked up three weeks ago. If you're going to do something, I'm just telling you this, if you're going to do something, do it. Don't give us any more lip service. We want to see something happen. These kids are worth it. I volunteered for the small engine. Ryan Sacks is the one that got me involved in this stuff. I've known him since he was like that high and I should have kicked him a little harder. If we're going to do something in this county, let's do it. You know, let's, let's get the backbone and say, "We're going to help this county." Like I said, I don't have to help this county. My kids graduated from Campbell Middle. I tried to get involved in their vo ag program, they didn't want me. Ryan Sacks started getting me involved in this program, Mrs. Scarborough took her arms up and took me in and let me do this stuff. You all have got a big decision to make. You've got two set of shoes that's going to be hard to fill, Ryan Sacks's and Mrs. Scarborough's. Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't think that it's, that we don't have the backbone to do it. We need the applicants that are the most qualified.
Well, I'm not, I'm not talking about hiring a teacher. I'm saying, when you say, "We're going to build this barn," build it. You say, "We're going to hook the gas up," hook it up.
As soon as the money's there, I'm sure that it will be built.
And we're willing to help you any way we can.
We'll remember that.
Yeah, well, I've got to help the science, I've got to help the science teacher out over here, she needs some projects. I got something in my head for her. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. I have to run at senior night at the soccer game and they need the voice of the Panthers.
Well, listen, if you guys want to stick around, we're going to continue through the, through the agenda. If you don't want to stick around for the rest of the agenda, you are more than welcome to leave right now.
Mr. President, we appreciate that, but we actually have a meeting to talk about our fundraisers in October, but we welcome all you all to the pumpkin festival and also the equipment auction. Thank you all for allowing us to speak.
Very much. Thank you. Glad to meet you.
I like to, I like to just take...
John, hold on a minute.
Let's go to our presentation with Bertie Gannon.
Let's, how about if we put that at the end, get through all the four B and then just kind of do that at the end?
Sounds like a winner.
Because you guys will just be somewhere now.
Yep. Let's go to the administrative section. We're in administrative section. We'll look at A, school volunteers, because everybody, everybody's had a chance to read this agenda. School volunteers for West Hamlin Elementary, we see those, and for Lincoln County High School and Hamlin PK through A. B is the agreements for the following supervisor aid in accordance with the code. You see the, the supervisor of the age right there. You have C, following college students before an observation at Lincoln County High School for semester. D, out-of-state trip for the FFA students at Lincoln County High School, attend national competition. E is the agreement with Melissa Given to provide staff development to teachers on Western Virginia Alternative Assessment. Any questions on that? F, agreements with Sue Duggan, I think I said that right, and Catherine Lapila. Your guess is mine. To provide training for, for K through five teachers in everyday math. And G is the adoption of a new job description and approval for, to post an extracurricular position for the internet wiring specialist. That is on the attachment.
Mr. President, I would like to comment on the, on F, on the contracts themselves, just a correction. The period of this agreement will be from September 24, 2011, and I think it's just, we'll be September 24. I think it's just one day, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, there's four instead of four, or just, yeah, or whatever, but it's not, it's not from to something, it's just that day, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We can approve that. Any corrections? Anybody else, anything on G?
I just want, is this our new math series? It is.
Anything on G? All right, you heard the administrative section?
I moved.
I'll say. All those in favor to approve the administrative section, please say aye. I'll oppose, y'all have. Let's look at our finances.
Okay, we'll do financial statements later on.
Okay.
And, but we'll go ahead and talk about, we have three retirees and then we have invoices totaling $369,477.80. Any questions about any of those invoices? No questions? Okay.
All right, you heard the, the section for finance?
I'm motion.
All those in favor to approve the financial section, please say aye. I'll oppose, y'all have. Let's go to our personnel. Ms. Lucas, everyone has had, did you all get a chance to read the agenda? I think there's a agenda. Revised, okay.
No addends.
Just have a couple of little corrections.
Okay. Personnel section?
I'm assuming this vocational person resigned, that you're being immediately posted. You got to post that for two weeks, I was curious. I could. I, I, I don't know.
This is, Ms., go ahead.
I was going to say, normally we do for five days unless there is a request, you know, because if we do not get any applicants, any qualified applicants, we repost anyway.
And this is for electrical work?
Yes.
Electrician, basically? All right. And do we post them out? So, so you all heard the, you all seen and read the personnel schedule?
I'll say.
All those in favor to approve the personnel schedule, please say aye. I'll oppose. Y'all have. Let's go to... Let's go to Bertie.
Yay.
Hang on a minute.
Okay, so I've got a bunch of handouts I want to give you guys and, these things you'll just probably want to read at home tonight when you don't have anything else to do. How long will it take? All right. This is the, this first group is vendor payments of $250 or less. And then the bigger group is vendor payments over $250. And then here's the really good group, this is what everybody made for the year.
Y'all want it to be published in the paper?
No, this doesn't get published.
We can if you want, Donna.
The vendor activity gets published? The salaries do not, but it's unpublished for you.
But, but the big, this does.
That does, and that's in the paper this week.
Today.
Okay, so those are the things, those are the things you'll just want to look at. Now, this is a copy of the actual financial statements. Okay, well, you'd have to be a CTA to understand this. But probably what I want to do is just make you just a little bit familiar with what is, is in the financial statements. So if you'll just start flipping through with me, here's our officers and if you want to know when your term's up, you can look there and see. Then the next page is, this is a schedule that is to be published in the newspaper. You'll see that in the supplemental schedule of the expenditures and it shows what the board members made, the superintendents made, the expenditures under the $250, expenditures over $250, the total salaries excluding the board members and superintendent salaries. Next page is signature pay. Now, the next group is called management discussion and analysis, and this is a new thing that we've done in our financial statements for a couple of years. I don't really know anybody who looks at this, other than maybe the State Department, and there's a lot of work involved in it, but I just want you to know that this is a management discussion and analysis and it has a few highlights in it, like the board's assets exceeded liabilities, $49,699,43. The board's total net assets increased by $4,915,49. At the close of the current fiscal year, the board's governmental funds reported a combined negative ending fund balance of $3,480,36, a decrease of 4.2 million in comparison with the prior year. So we have no funds available, but at the end of the current fiscal year, unassigned fund balance for the general fund was a negative 5 million, 5.8 million, a decrease of 3.4 million as compared to the undesignated fund balance of the prior year. We have two new Gatsby implementations here. Gatsby 54 was implemented effective July 1 of 2010 and it's reflected in the new fund classifications. If you want to know the real details of that, you'll go to note one, item N, but I'll talk a little bit about it later on. But of the unfunded current year, other post-employment benefits, those little OPEs, and we'll talk about it quite a bit because it just pops up everywhere, the OPEB expenses were $3.4 million. That's just the unfunded portion for Lincoln County. Now, we make monthly payments to this OPEB liability. This is our current year unfunded portion. So without the recording of the current year OPEB, the unassigned fund balance in the general fund would be a negative 2.3 million as compared to the prior year of 1.2 million, which is a decrease of 3.6 million. Now, Lincoln County's total unfunded OPEB, so that's all the years that we've been tracking OPEBs, which is three years now, showing on our balance sheet for all the years is currently $7.6 million. So if this liability were removed from the balance sheet, our unassigned fund balance in the general fund would be a positive 1.8 million. And that's really what you want to know. And now we're done. So we said all that to say that. There is another Gatsby that we implemented this year and that's Gatsby Statement 24, which changes the way we classify our ending fund balance. For those of you guys who've been around for a long, long time, you look at, we've had enclosures and designated funds and undesignated funds, well, those terms are all gone, we have all new terms.
Could I ask you something?
Yes, Tom, please.
The 1.8 million that you talked about, the unassigned fund balance, is indeed unassigned?
Yes.
Not assigned, not designated?
Well, no, that's not true. I do need to clarify that a little bit more.
Because you know, my question always is, you know, how much money do we actually have? If we're going to try to decide to do something?
Under, under, under old, under old terms, it wouldn't be that much because I've already used 1.6 million of this for our fiscal year 12 budget, but we can no longer show that because it creates, it makes that 5.8 million deficit higher, so you can't include that anymore according to Gatsby Statement Number 54. So that's hanging out there and I want to disclose that to you guys. So out of that 1.8, I've already used 1.6 of it in this year's budget. Okay? So we're kind of coming back down, you know, we had all this surplus, but we're coming back down. Okay? And I know people are wanting, and I know Ryan probably needs to hear this, and then while we're on this, we have lots of, well, we have like a million dollars in excess levy money. So when it comes to instructional materials, supplies, technology, we have money. Where we don't have the money is in the personnel department. So that's where we're going to have to start really tightening up is the personnel department. But so, but I don't want you guys to think we don't have money to do things, you know, for our textbooks and all the instructional stuff, it's just that we're going to start watching personnel.
She said like the levy money that, but that is, has to be specifically used for?
Yes, yes.
This, 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 and this.
And it's going to be in the restricted fund balance.
Right.
Okay, we'll look at that in just a minute.
Are you going to get into this in more depth as far as, like this personnel thing?
Well, I had, I knew you guys would want to see this, but I'm just, as soon as, as soon as I get this done tonight, I'm going to start on certified list.
Yeah, I mean, I mean just...
And I'll have, I'll have to do all that, so, so that's probably what I'm going to do and that'll probably be next week or the week after, then I'll give you guys a real nice report on personnel, like how many positions we have and how many we're being funded for, so you'll get all that in about two weeks.
Yeah, but I'm, I mean, I think you're kind of alluding here, the fact that we're 30 people over, whatever it is, that, that we need to be cautious.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, we've got to really start watching because, you know, like I said, the excess levies designated for certain things and we have excess levy money, but it's just when we are coming to what's in that general fund bucket, which is transportation, maintenance, and then pretty much all your salaries, so we're getting low on that bucket. But our excess levy bucket has lots of money.
$200,000, basically, the 1.6, 1.8 that we, we, actually is discretionary.
Yeah, just as far as we...
Right, yes.
$200,000.
Just $200,000.
Now...
Now, and this is all changed?
Well, but I mean, you know, we still have out there the property at Hartz High School, or Middle School.
Okay, yeah.
You know, I mean, when we talk about this $200, is that already encumbered?
Okay, well, let me tell you this, and I'll, we'll get into it. I did transfer into the permanent improvement fund, $587,000, okay, because I can't leave the permanent improvement fund in this big deficit, so I had to transfer the money in there. Now, if we should come up with some sources of funding to pay for this land, and I could pull it back into the general fund, but for now, so I had to transfer, you know, $587,000 in to cover all the expenses that we've paid.
But now one plot of parcel land we haven't.
There's one still left, there's one still left.
So would that have to come from this $200,000, or have you kind of got it set aside also?
No, we would have to pay for it out of the general fund.
How about legal fees associated with all that? Are those already taken care of, or that has to come out of there too?
We've paid for a bunch, but there are any new legal fees, but I don't think there, there's not much going on legal wise on this.
We don't know what's going to happen with this last parcel.
True. I mean, there could be a lot of things to that.
Because regardless of the land and this, any attorney fees associated with this last parcel would come from there.
Yeah, I'll have to pull it out of the general fund.
Out of that $200,000? We have to be real.
And let me, now let me say that.
Me too.
Yeah, I know, and, and that's why I wanted to point to the end, like, so you guys can feel free to ask me these questions, I want you to ask me questions, and I'll do my best to explain to you.
As long as you realize at the end, we want to know how much money we have.
Well, and that's, and that's why I kind of highlighted that number, that's what we have. But, but because of this new GASB statement, I can't, like the past three or four years, I've been able to designate that amount that I used to establish the new budget, okay, that 1.6 million, but I can't do that anymore. Though, according to new accounting procedure, you can't do that anymore. So I just have to tell you that out of that 1.8, I've already used 1.6 for this year's budget.
Really used, and it's really going to be used, and not just on paper?
Uh, well, it's on, it's on paper right now, it's just, you know, because you have to, you know, here's what we think our expenses are going to be, you have to, you know, budget, you know, budget, balance your budget.
Did you budget any legal fees?
Not for, just for the county, just our general county, probably about $75,000.
Did you budget any money and put the, closing the land? So now eventually, if you're going to get this down to our level, or we'll, how much do we have left?
Well, that's pretty budgeted, that's it.
It's not budgeted, you know, it's not budgeted, that's all we have. I mean, unless, unless we, we stay below cost on our budget, then that money will come back to us.
Well, great.
One, one thing I wanted to say, you know, Carol and I were at recent meeting today, and Senator Plimmo was there, and he pretty much said that they were going to take care of, okay, this legislative session, you know, until that happens, you know, but, but that was what he said to all of us there. So I believe that legislators were going to take care of it, not.
Because we, you know, we don't have $70, $60,000.
No, 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 well, I mean, I think, I think we all pretty much kind of do that, but I mean, but still, I mean, they, they say care of them.
Yeah, but still, still, we're, you know, yeah, yeah.
Unless, I mean, for discretionary right now, that hasn't been budgeted.
And here's what gets every county, Personnel gets every county, you know, so we always have to stay on top of Personnel, that's, that's the big deal. That's always the thing that gets them, okay. So let's just go to, if you want to look at page three, that just has our current assets, capital assets, and that probably doesn't mean much to you guys. Let me go on to, let's go to page six, there's a chart.
I like it.
And that's revenue by sources, expenditures by the function. Page six on the charts. And then on page seven, I just want to kind of disclose this to you guys, I've talked about our capital assets. So I want to tell you what we have here. We do keep track of fixed assets, which is all land and any equipment, or all vehicles, any equipment over $5,000. So to close the books on June 30th, we had $2.5 million in land, and you see that in the prior year, we had 1.9 million, so the difference is that land cost at Hartz. And all the land improvements that we're doing up there, so that's where all that money is going into. Buildings and improvements, uh... Building and improvements is down a little bit because of depreciation, so all this, everything other than land has to be depreciated, so you'll see a decrease there because of depreciation. Furniture and fixtures, we have 1.3 million, vehicles, 1.9 million. Construction in progress, now, so everything that's going on in Hartz Craig, I've got to keep track of. And you, nobody has a clue what I do up there all the time, sitting in front of the computer, hour, for hours on end, but everything that's going on up there, I've got to keep track of, and like the land, you can go ahead and book the land, but everything else that's going on has to sit in this little bucket called construction in progress. And you know, the auditors are going to come in, I have to verify every bit of that $8.3 million. And then when that school gets completed, then all that construction in progress will either move to buildings, furniture, fixture, or one of those categories. But it's, I mean, lots and lots of time, and this is a new thing that come into, you know, the school accounting procedures is all of this fixed assets, lots of time involved in that. Long-term debt, let me just talk about that for a minute. At the end of 2011, we have outstanding long-term debt of 1.9 million dollars, and that's our two Qs and Ls. Page eight.
1.9 or?
1.1.
Oh.
Now, you'll see the little group net, net assets, after I go through 50,000 worksheets, we come up with our net assets, which is 49 million, 699,000. And those, if you look at the top, there's all the assets of our board, and we still have, you know, we have quite a bit in cash, we have 4.5 million dollars in cash. So that's why I say we have money, but we just don't have the money for the Personnel. And then you can just read down through there the different assets that we have, there's our liabilities, and there's our, our OPEP, the state aid funded portion is 6 million, other, or other funds is 1 million. Okay, let's go to the next page, and just tell you what this is. This is a statement of activities, which really doesn't mean anything to anybody. Not even to me, it's just what I have to do. Next page is your balance sheet, now this one is the one that we operate here, this is our old method of doing things. Now I want you to look, you have assets, liabilities, fund balance, I just want to go over that with you for one second. Now, according to GASB Statement number 54, fund balances have to be divided up into categories. One of the categories is non-spendables, so a non-spendable item is something that you can't convert to cash, and that includes inventory and prepaid items, which is workers' comp and new retirement forfeiture. So we had on our books, kind of $20,536 in non-spendable, so I have to designate that part of our fund balance for that. Restricted, these are items that are restricted by a high level of authority, which is not the, the board, and that happens to be excess levies. So we have 1.139 restricted for excess levies. The committed is, you know how I have little local projects, and the biggest ones, probably the Medicaid money, special projects worksheet that I give you guys sometimes, so those, we have committed $1 million, 1,018,000, those are committed, and I have to pull that out of our fund. So there's where we come up with our negative unassigned fund balance. But then if you look up, there's those OPEPs, that's $6 million in OPEP and the 1.5 million in OPEP, so we have to pull out to get a true number where we're at. Okay, next page is just simply our revenue. So the general fund, the very first column, the revenues were $34 million. Expenditures were $37 million. We had transfers in, transfers out, sell the fixed assets, da-da-da. We go down, our ending fund balance, when you're looking at revenue and expenditures and other sources, is a negative 3.5 million. And then that carries over to the balance sheet. Now, I just want you to go on over to the notes, notes to the financial statements. And I want you guys to read all of this tonight. And you will have a test on this. You're going to have a test. And let me just see if there's anything in here.
My new tapes are only 60 minutes, you can't get my new tapes.
I think those were vague.
He can take busy up our tapes and tapes.
If you look on page 11, this may be of interest to you guys. Note number six. Right there, okay, note number six is excess levy, so if you ever want to know what our levy calls are, you look at your note number six. And note number seven is our capital, and you know what the beginning balance was, additions, deletions, how much, the next page is how much the depreciation was. And then note number eight is your long-term debt. Note number nine is our lease payments on our long-term debt, so if you want to know, you know, in 2012, we got a $53,000 payment, and we got a $46,000 payment.
Could I take you back to?
Yes, yes.
On the very last line, where it says long-term liabilities? What is exactly that?
That's our long-term debt.
I know, but how, what's the amount?
Long-term liabilities, 1 million, 92, is that what you're looking at?
It looks like it's.
It's 1,000, 1,200, comma, 6,000.
That's a type. Coming number.
Well, I mean, what is it supposed to, let's see what I can look at.
I think it's supposed to be the number right above that.
There's an 8, 1.
That's just an.
Mark through that one.
Hey, Birdy, I have a little quick question, on page 11, where it says excess levies and salary supplements?
Yes.
That salary, what, could you tell me what that is?
Yes. Okay, for every professional, $1,400 of their salary is paid through the excess levy. And for every service person, $700 is paid through the excess levy.
I'll just ask.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, that's why I wanted to state to the end, and I'll just, you know, as long as you guys want to ask questions, I'll tell, I'll tell you something.
This is yours, Ryan.
Yes, uh-huh, yes.
This is yours.
For student activities, the $50,000, is that, what is that exactly?
Okay, that is, that goes out to the schools. The high school gets 40,000 of it, and elementary's gets the 10,000. And then the 40 and 10 is allocated out based on the number of students that each school has. It's to be used to help clubs, take kids on trips, if they need to use it for athletic stuff they can, or the band, just different things, you know, try not to save too much, and they do, they pay their athletic insurance out of this.
So it has, it just, this is money that has to be used on kids?
Yeah.
You know, activities, makes it dirty.
Yes, and it's to help.
It's like, way, and, but that's at the discretion of the principal.
Yes, it's, it's, you know, we don't micromanage them.
Right.
And actually, access money in our, generated through our levy, so they've been getting about $80,000 for the past couple of years because, you know, they just kind of needed money there. But the purpose of this is parents can't afford to have their children involved in different things anymore, they don't have money. So that's to help, you know, let these children be able to participate in different activities and not be so hard on parents.
Paying the insurance?
Yes, student insurance, or, it's the athletic insurance, that's quite, gosh, I don't know, who knows how much that is? You know, what is it, it's, it's like, $50,000, it's quite, yeah.
Well, I've had complaints from parents saying, one half of our levy money that's supposed to provide the kids with meals when they have away trips, and I wasn't quite sure how to answer that.
It's a discretion of the, of the principal?
Yeah, yeah.
They want to use it.
They probably use it more for transportation costs than they do for you.
Well, we don't charge them transportation anymore.
I mean, they use the, this activity, student activities money.
Now, I'll tell you about meals, a little us to do meals, okay? So I try not to do meals here. I try to have them do their meals through their school money because it's just so hard to track, you know, what kids getting what, and getting the cash, and I don't, I don't deal in cash. See, they can go write a check, the schools can write a check for, say, $100, and give Suzie Bob, John Bob, da-da-da, and, and everything's documented right there at the school, and it's just hard for me to do that, so I try not to do that. But you know, like, we can pay for motel rooms, or we can put stuff on a credit card for that, but just not, I can't hand out cash to them.
I always wanted to know why we got ill money in college, and you, they would hand out ill money, that's why. Because they, they.
Yeah, y'all, I mean, it's auditing, and, yeah, you know, you just got to.
$20,000, they are.
Well, I've had parents just say, you know, they would stop to eat, and so many children were there that didn't have any money, and they would have to buy their meals, and, and then I had somebody to say, well, what happened to our levy money, it's supposed to be doing that.
And, I don't know, probably not.
Was that even a levy call?
Yeah, probably not just for.
Well, it's, it's a discretion, it's student activity.
Well, we're buying meals, but what's any, I don't know.
I don't, I don't think it's really ever been used to buy meals, I don't know where that, now, because like I said, usually the meals are bought at the school level.
Probably the levy money that's sent to the school.
Well, no, we don't send any, everything stays right here, you know, you know, like, we can't send anything to the schools. The only thing that actually goes to the schools is faculty sent money, everything else has to stay here. So, you know, just certain things that we can't do because of the auditing and accountability and documentation, there's just certain things we can't do, and one of them's that.
I know, they're trying to feed them before they go on, on the trip, but then they don't have money to stop and feed them on the.
Now, is that athletics?
Yes.
Yeah, so usually athletics, they pay for that out of their athletics account at the local schools, that's how that's always been handled. I don't know that we've ever used this, and I don't think that was the intent of this, Donna was here when we did that. I think Donna and I, Donna and I kind of were instrumental in getting this through. So that's kind of not for that.
The schools in the past have used it on.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I was asking, because the parents have looked at the levy money that's supposed to help with that, and I wasn't sure how to answer it, so I asked.
Yeah, that probably decides another, if it's football team, the football team needs to be buying their meals, and if it's cheerleaders, you know, they need to raise their own money.
But as a principal, there's different ways to do it, there's channel, and you have different, you have different pots that you can take out, you know, you have different buckets.
Yeah, those little buckets. Okay, um...
I need to figure out which buckets we're going to take out.
Go to page 17. Now, go to page 18. And this is the, the new fund balance, how it's broken down, and that's just a little chart, page 18, oh, at the bottom, it's just a chart how the fund balances are broken down. And then, note at 14 is for encumbrances. 19, page 19, note 14.
I'm still looking at OPEP on previous pages, actually.
Okay, so I think that's all I want to talk about there, and actually, in this whole thing, that's probably all I want to talk about.
Alright, we don't have to, here's the thing, we don't have to.
Now, let me just go through a little, this little thing here a little fast, give you a couple of little notes. You know, it's really, it's just so complex, but. I guess I said, threw it. There's our different funds, you know, when I talk about general funds, and I talk about the special projects, and the improvement, and then our, our bond. So there's four different accounts that we're keeping track of there.
When, when does the R F funds end?
Uh, some of them end, uh... Friday, it's Friday the 30th? Some of them end on Friday, for encumbrance, for someone has to be, they have to be encumbered. And then we just got three new ones, new SIG grants for, God Valley was handling and...
Handling.
Handling, that will be good for a year.
Are they R F also?
Yes, uh-huh, yes, they are. Okay, so there's, you know, and I've kind of already talked about all this a little bit, but there was our beginning OPEP, and then our current year OPEP, and then there's that, the number that I wanted you to know is 1.8. And then there's that, the number that I wanted you to know is one point eight million. And then, like I said, in the past, I have deducted our, whatever I use for the current year budget, but we're not allowed to do that anymore, but I, so I just want you to know that. And there's just notes on the changes. And if you really want to, oh, let me get this to you. Yes, uh-huh. Now, just a couple minutes here. This, if you just want one page that has everything, I just kinda did that for you guys, so we know. Just got one sheet, you can go and look and say, you know, here was our revenues, here was our expenses.
This is in what you just.
That's just your typical sheet. And then this is, that's just our, our long-term debt, future debt payments. I always had that in our little spreadsheet. Then other information that I gave you is, this is the five-year expenses, and revenues and expenses. Yeah, so you can look at for five years on it. At your leisure, when you're reading the next financial statement. Then the other page behind that one, and kinda what Steve was alluding to, like, how many people and all that. This, this one. For fiscal year ten, eleven, we were funded for two hundred and ninety-six professionals. And, no, we had employed two hundred and ninety-six when we did cert fund list. And then we were funded for two seventy, so we were over twenty-six on professionals. On service, we were, on this one. One more handout.
The second handout.
Oh, six. Right, like, okay, that's it. Just look at the last one. That's my third handout. Yeah, I know, it's like. And this is just the half of it. I have an auditor's book that's ready for the auditors to come in, it's that thin. But that's, um. Service, we had a hundred and seventy-five, and we were funded for a hundred and sixty-three. So we had, had unfunded service of eleven, unfunded professionals twenty-six. So we had a total unfunded of thirty-eight. Then if you look in the column I, there was my beginning fund balance of a hundred and sixty. There's our undesignated fund, that five point eight million. And I added back the OPEBs, and that gave us the, the fund balance of one point eight. So we increased fifteen thousand dollars when we compared to the prior year, to got OPEBs and everything. Yes.
For this upcoming year, what did you budget for our, for our, you know, our personnel? Do you understand what I'm saying? Because, I mean, that's really, that's, that's where we're at. I mean, you know, if it's, it's like, how many people did we budget for, for this coming year?
Well, we budgeted for everybody that we.
That we had.
Yes.
Not including anyone else.
No, well, we, we take a snapshot in March.
Right.
And we say, here's what we think we're gonna do.
Right.
And that's what we budgeted for. Now, things can change. Now, the, this was, that was October, that's what we have when we turned in the cert fund list last year. That's what we have. And then compared to the stated formula, we were gonna be funded for two hundred and seventy of those positions.
Like, follow what KK's saying, is the number employed now, do you have a?
That's what I wanna, that's, soon as I can get this done, I want, that's my next project. You know, so we'll have real good numbers on, on that, when that certified list goes in, it'll be accurate. Yeah.
You know how many?
Well, yeah, 'cause we guys.
She's the one that's the budget, you know, and then that's the thing. I mean, you know, if, if she put it in the budget, and maybe, you know, she was foreseeing, maybe we're gonna, we're gonna need another position here. You know what I'm saying? And she's allocated that into the budget, so the two hundred thousand dollars extra that we had that was unbudgeted, you know, we wouldn't have to use that necessarily for that. Are you with me?
Or you might have to use some of it.
Or you might have to use more, if she didn't budget right. I mean, but, you know, but she's gonna go with.
And, you know, probably, we've added a couple.
But she may have some.
But then, then some that we budgeted, we may not want, you know, may not have to have it, you know.
Right.
Right, soon, it's like, that is my very next big project, is, is cert fund list, and it's.
So this is last year, we worked with thirty-eight last year.
The year that we just ended, uh-huh.
Thank you for this. Okay, this is really a useful sheet.
Yeah, well, that's why, you know, I'll just kinda like hand out a little bit of stuff. Uh, and then the very last handout is just a, a few years of comparison, if you really wanna look at that. And the percentage of our expenditures. Like, if you look at, um, let me see, the one, two, three, the third column over is for fiscal year ten, eleven. And if you look at tax collections, that's twenty-three percent of our revenue. And this is just the general fund only.
Is that an increase, I mean?
Yeah, and it's.
Percentage drop, I know, I know it is, but is it an increased percentage?
It probably is, because it's a million dollars more than it was the prior year, you know. So if you look at the net change. Then state sources, you know, is that four million? And of course, that's, that GASB twenty-four, I don't know if I even, did I talk to you about GASB twenty-four? Let me in notes. Let me tell you about GASB twenty-four.
Those are the bonds, right? Those are the two bonds?
No, those are QZ.
QZ, all right.
Let me just have one, one final thing on GASB twenty-four.
I'll listen to the accounting process.
So we had two implementations, fifty-four, which dealt with the fund balances, and how we categorize the fund balances. Then GASB twenty-four is, says, anytime somebody makes a payment on your behalf, for you or on your behalf, you have to record that as a revenue and expense. Okay, so the state during fiscal year eleven made a payment to the unfunded liability of four point nine million dollars. And I've got that noted on the bottom of this little sheet here. So if you're looking at revenues and expenses, they're gonna be more by that, that amount, that four point nine, four point nine million. Because I had.
Four air payments.
Yeah. But it was, it's a washout, it's a zero, but it inflates revenues and it inflates expenses. But that's the GASB twenty-four, in case somebody knows, asked you guys that question, if you can help. Questions? So if you're not confused.
Hey, I appreciate it, Arden, you did a good job. I feel you. I think you did a great job. You did a good job, Arden, thank you for all the information. All right, we have a next thing on our agenda? We need to, we don't need to prove this, do we? We need to prove this, I don't think we do.
We did on the finances.
We did on the finances, all right, good deal. All right. Let's go to, I believe the next thing that we have on our agenda is comments and concerns.
I changed where things are now, but I, I went out there and looked at that. And then when you look and see the little diagram he gave us, and showed what the tract would be, and you can kinda see the layout of the whole thing there. And I know when we were out, he came out one day and met with us, and kinda shared some information with us, made it even better, you know. But we talked about something I'd even forgotten about, the roadway that goes up beyond, above the projected stadium where the Jones farm, and they still own property there, the other day, there could be. In other words, we have to allow that, there's a road going through there too, and I'd kinda, I've forgotten about that. But, you know, personally, when I looked at it and saw all, what was there as being projected as part of the stadium facility, and realizing that that roadway was there, and then thinking of any future growth, and of course, parking to me is, is just gonna have to, it seems to me that you're gonna have to always have additional parking, that I personally don't think there's adequate room in that location for the bearings. Unfortunately, the way our property is laid out, when you get over there and just look over the edge of it where the field came, you know, there's huge cornfields there, or acres of it. But it's probably in the, in the flood plain, and that would, you know, so much of our property is just in that flood plain. But just up in the vicinity of the athletic, proposed athletic field, I don't personally think that the barrier fit that it's room for, that's just my opinion. There may be somewhere else on the, on the property, but not there.
I agree with Steve, just didn't run where they wanted to put it.
I go to, and they're walking around, I just don't see how it would fit in that place, unless there's another place just like, you know, or somewhere else. I, I think, I think in general, you know, we, we like the idea, and, and, Ms. Lucas, did, you ever hear from?
I did not, he did not give me one back.
Okay, so we don't really know how it's working in another place?
Oh, yes, he got, I did speak with him, and it was working well, but as far as the, the land and the contract and that kinda thing, he did not give that to me.
Okay, so that's positive as far as it being on a, a high school property or something.
But the distance away from the school was much greater than what we have here.
Okay, okay. And, and we talked before, you understand that, that what we own over there now, the trailer with the empty states, is in the flood.
I think.
It's in the flood. Okay, I'm just trying to clarify here, okay?
Actually, the bridge is in the flood plain.
Okay, and then all of our fields down there on the lift, all that's in the flood plain, okay? It does lead a lot, it's not the flood plain. I mean, really, it's not a lot of.
No, the ball field, see, all of there, they're in the flood plain.
All that. And what would be is the football facility, whatever.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Um, we go to, uh. We need to have a executive session?
Yes, we do, but before we go into executive session, Carol and I, I think I alluded to this a little bit earlier, we were in attendance for our RISA meeting. And I asked Carol, you know, about updates, when we attend, if that's a, something that we need to come back and kind of report to you guys on, because there were a couple of items that, that was brought up today that I'd have kind of, you know, thought.
I told you, we've never had it before, but I think it would be wonderful because everybody to know what's. You mean, not just in an oral sense? Because I know Larry Bates, he used to make like a little report, give us the agenda or something, because I, I know we would get some information from Larry about it.
And I feel he never did.
But we did discuss it, I don't think.
Well, just, you know, I'd like to be able to do that, and I just didn't, you know, know what kind of format or something that you guys would want, but just wanted to mention.
Just put it under there, RISA report every month or something.
Okay, because one of the things that they did bring to the meeting today, fingerprinting will no longer be, starting January, will no longer be a county. We will not be taking care of that. They're going to have twenty mobile labs throughout the state that when someone applies for a job, we will no longer be doing the card or doing anything. They will have to go to one of these particular labs, wherever that may be, whether it's in Huntington, or Logan, or wherever it is. But we will no longer do that.
The base board.
Well, at this point in time, I think what we've done here on the fingerprinting part, professional people, when they're going to, they have to write a check to W D E. But we've been paying for the service personnel. Now, how that's going to transpire totally has not been clarified with us. This is something that the state police had entered into a contract with the company. Now, the beauty of it, it will expedite the report back to us, where we now have been waiting six to eight weeks, you know, when someone comes in and everything's done, we're just waiting on a report back. This, this will expedite that for the counties, which is wonderful. But that's gonna be something that's very different, you know, for us, that's one less thing that we will be doing. But now, as far as if we, as a county, I, I don't know that we would be involved in the payment, you know, because the professionals pay for their own now. I don't know if we will continue paying for the service, you know, in, in what dollar amount that is.
And you're not sure, they're not sure themselves to give, that's a clear picture. Are these true mobile labs, they will, they were driving around or something, or are they just?
I don't know if they will.
At certain sites?
I don't know if they're going to permanently be housed at the RISA two building. They have asked RISA to be that agency, you know, that will take care of that. And this is one of those non-negotiable things. It's our, the state police have already entered into that contract. They're just trying to get RISA to be that, one of those places for the lab to be housed. Of course, Mr. Sax told them today that Lincoln County would.
Yeah, great place.
We would, you know, they could set up here, you know, that way our people wouldn't have to be going a long distance, but.
Just, that's not twenty Reis, is there just twelve, seventeen, eighteen?
No, there's gonna be.
Be somewhere else.
There's going to be place throughout the state, but I'm not sure, you know, where those locations are going to be as of yet. Another point of interest for us, the bus trainers, they have, I proposed to RISA that they be the person or the agency that would hire bus trainers in order to do the, the training for prospective bus operators, instead of the counties doing it solely, and then having the people to, uh, be tested, you know, from the bus inspectors that, that comes to the counties. They would be trained by the persons that have been hired through RISA. They, they still have some questions, you know, that we had today about how that would work, and how that would look exactly. They talked about if they hired the trainers, they could rotate the sites for the training throughout the RISA. They, they may be in Huntington for training, then they may go to Logan for the training, then they may go to Mego, you know, and, and rotate. But one of the advantages that they did talk about was if they train a pool of people, then if Lincoln County needed three drivers, maybe three of those people in that pool, even though they may not be from here, but they would come to Lincoln County and be there, you know, we could hire them. RISA. Yeah. Who would be to pay those trainers?
Yes.
That was, that was a question.
Dee was very upset about that.
Yes.
She said she had no funding to do this, and she was onto Joe pretty heavy, Joe Panetta. So, so right now, the county pays our own train?
We pay our.
So we pay that, we, we go back and spend the train?
Yes.
And, as all other counties do?
Yes, and, and one of the things that, because I asked, you know, one of the reasons was because the, counties were not getting the, I guess, back for the buck, the people that were being trained were not passing the test. You know, so they've piloted this in two other Reis, and they, it has been successful, much more successful than the counties training the people on their own. But I did interject that we have had success with our two trainers that we have now. You know, I didn't really speak for previous years, but I do know that now we are getting a hundred percent, or almost a hundred percent passage of, of the people that are being trained. And of course, he brings out the fact that we are using regular bus operators. And do they have the time, could they do it as expeditiously as? And do they have the time, could they do it as expeditiously as if the RESA was doing it, you know?
Is this mandatory? Can we all gather things through, is it mandatory?
Well, I ask, I ask, you know, and, and he seemed to think that we could do both, if that's what we wanted to do. And, and money wise, and they brought that up, is what's it costing us to train our prospective employees? Versus how much would it cost us if we were only giving them so much money, you know, out of that?
But if you go, go down, it's costing about a thousand dollars per bus driver. And from some of the other counties, interjected that we don't pay that much.
I know.
To train ours.
Somebody's got to fit the bill, something.
Yeah.
The state does it, or RESA has to come up with money.
RESA is really.
Well, why can't the transportation director be trained to be a trainer?
Well, we have, well, I don't know.
Friend?
I think it might be a matter of time. It could be a matter of. Ever hard having time to do it. It takes, they're required to train for, for example, hours.
They brought that out.
And then to have so many hours behind the wheel training. And then, you know, it's like, you know, take the test.
We got our set. Oh, yes, we have, we have. And, and so that's, that was part, they were saying, look at how much you're paying already, you know, versus what you might be paying. And, and at this time, I cannot actually tell you, I'm sure we could figure that out, how much we are paying in the extracurricular job for the people that, how much time, or how much money we're spending, versus how many people we have trained. We have to look into.
But if, even if the counties had to pay, you might be able to pay a lesser amount.
Right.
If you pay a certain part for each of the six counties.
That's what, that's what they're, you know, talking about. And, and being able to do it quicker, because we have to, our people would have to schedule around their regular job versus, you know, some of the people may have part-time jobs, the ones that are applying, wanting to be trained. You know, there are advantages and disadvantages, as there is to most things. So, but I just wanted to make sure that if, that if we chose not to do it, that we could, or if we wanted to do both. And it sounded like, you know, we could. I, I did, if we're getting a hundred percent, you know, passage rate, you know, versus most of the counts, I think they said we're giving like fifty-seven percent. You know, so you're investing money in, in all of that training without any return.
People are, they feel, do they have to take the whole training session over, or do they just take the test?
Just take the test.
Test, okay.
Did I understand them correctly to say they were having forty hours of training, plus then another fourteen?
Behind, behind the wheel on the bus, they actually, yes.
We just got to see which one.
Of course, the problem is that why, no one has enough substitute bus drivers. It's a critical shortage here, and we.
A RESA pool, and we were allowed to call them up and say, we have, you know, these many bus runs that were short today, and you've, you know. Or they would assign so many to Lincoln County, and so many to Logan, but, you know, it was brought up, you know, by Logan County, so pretended that they got to the point very close to where they would have to shut down, because they did not have enough drivers to make their run. And I do know McDowell County did shut down for a couple of days because of that. But those, those were, you know, things that pained to our attention, that will affect us immediately.
And after the next RESA meeting, we'll be able to get more of an update, because Dee is not pleased with this at all, and, and she and Joe would want to go back and forth to really make a concrete decision on how, how it's going to be done.
The meeting does start January, we, that's so.
Non-negotiable.
All right, was it?
That was very, very smart of you, I never thought about that, but I'd always wondered just exactly what goes on in RESA meetings, and then, being a RESA myself, I was just amazed at how much actually does go on. So I'm glad you thought about that, because everybody does need to know that.
And, and we were, we were with our, some of our legislators.
Yes.
That were there and presented to us today, as well as had answered questions. We are looking at the, before we go into executive sessions, at the board meeting that is scheduled for October the third and October the eighteenth. And we would like to propose changes from October the third, move that one to the eleventh, and the eighteenth to the twenty-fifth. That would help us as far as personnel with their posting, and being able to get more. People on the personnel schedule, and more things on the agenda that I think that we all want to do.
What about that? Eighteenth, it helps me too.
Eleven and twenty-fifth.
Well, it's the eleven, eleven and twenty-fifth.
And we'll move the meeting that's at Midway, we'll move it from the eighteenth to twenty-fifth.
And that will be the twenty-fifth at Midway, and then the eleventh will be here.
What do you think, Sean?
I'd be in Ireland for the twenty-fifth, to do with all.
Gosh.
We have to go over there, so.
Where do you think you're going, Carol?
Ireland.
Oh, my God. What county is that in?
County Kerry.
Oh, I can't even say that. I don't know.
Say it again, Sean.
County Kerry.
Y'all have anything else for comments and concerns? All right, I make the motion we go into executive session, discuss personnel. All those in favor who go into executive session, please say aye. All opposed?